Welcome to the City of Bloomington Common Council Regular Session for Wednesday, August the 3rd. And this evening, we will begin by asking our clerk to call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Here.
We missed her audio. It looks like.
Here.
You're still muted for some reason, Kate.
I'm going to go ahead and skip past you, and we'll come back to you. Councilmember Scambalory?
Here.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
And back to Rosenbarger?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. And to summarize tonight's agenda, there are no minutes for approval, so we will move on to reports from council members, the mayor and city offices, council committees, and then the first opportunity for public comment, which is typically a 20-minute period. We will see how many people are in chambers and possibly on Zoom who wish to speak and adjust our time accordingly, followed by appointments to boards and commissions. Then we will have legislation for second readings and resolutions. Ordinance 22-20 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled "Vehicles and Traffic," reamending Sections 15.12.030 to remove three signalized intersections and add three signalized intersections. Section 15 dot 20 dot 010 by deleting the reference to restricted turn intersections. Section 15 point 24 point 020 by changing speed limits at four locations. Section 15 dot 32 dot 030 to change parking on Lincoln Street between Smith and Third to back-in angle parking and to add pull-in parking on South Morton Street from West Patterson Drive and Grimes Lane to 190 degrees north of West Patterson Drive and Grimes Lane. Section 15 point 32 point 050 to allow for prohibiting parking in municipal parking lots to respond to weather and maintenance issues. Section 15 point 32 point 080 to remove no parking spaces on South Morton Street and South Rogers Street and to add no parking spaces on Lincoln Street and North Park Avenue. Section 15 point 32 point 100 to add two loading zones on East Fourth Street. Section 15 point 37 point 020 to change the boundaries of the Garden Hill Residential Neighborhood Permit Parking Zone. Section 15 point 040 point 010 to add paid parking spaces and the Trades District Garage. And section 15 point 48 point 020 to add an administrative towing fee when vehicles are towed for reserved parking or outstanding citation violations. I understand there may be one amendment that is a slight housekeeping matter attached to this. That will be followed by legislation for first readings, and that will include ordinance 22 dash 21 to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled "Historic Preservation and Protection" to establish a historic district regarding Bethel A.M.E., Church and Parsonage. And Bethel A.M.E. will be the owner and the petitioner. Followed by additional public comment, we have a second opportunity at the end of our meeting for up to 25 minutes. Then we'll discuss our council schedule before we adjourn for the evening. So without further ado, let us move to reports from council members, and I will start on my left with Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you, President Sandberg. I just want to announce my constituent meeting for the month of August is going to be earlier than usual. It will be this Saturday, August 6th, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., so also earlier in the day. And it'll be here in the McCloskey Room, 135 of City Hall, and also via Zoom. And you can get the Zoom link on the City Council website. You can click on my name, and then you'll see my calendar. So I hope to see a lot of you there. We will talk about the budget and other upcoming issues. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Hello. I'd like to give a shout out to the Parks Department. There's an update on the basketball goals and basketball court at Switchyard Park. There's been discussion that we needed some pads and straightening out the rims. And Parks Department and Paula Devitt, they've responded, and so we're going to get some pads. They've been ordered for increased safety of people down there. And there's going to be some new backboards and goals for replacement. South rim is kind of bent, so they're going to get that fixed, and so everyone can have a good time playing down there. And we want to encourage people to use it and have a good time. Please don't hang on the backboards. It kind of bends it, and then it makes it hard for us to keep them in good shape for everybody. And so we hope everybody enjoys the courts, and they're going to be working on those pretty soon. Thank you very much, and thanks to Paula and the Parks Department.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Only a brief update to share that my August constituent meeting is being held on the 3rd Monday of the month, like usual. That's Monday, August 15th this month at 5:30 p.m. via Zoom. Details for that can be found on the City Council's calendar at bloomington.in.gov/council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
I have no report. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes, thank you. I'd also just continuing to try this evening, extend an invitation to my August constituent meeting. It's coming up via Zoom this Saturday, August 6th, 1:30 p.m. via Zoom, and the link is available on my website, souforcitycouncil.com. All you need to do is click on the join button. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to mayor and city offices. I don't believe we have any reports from them.
Does Kate Rosenbarger have it?
No. Kate, you are here for Title 15, correct?
No, Kate Rosenbarger. Does she have a report?
Oh, I am so sorry. Councilmember Rosenbarger, do you have a report? I completely forgot to look up at the Zoom screen.
No, thank you. I know, it's so hard when one of us is on Zoom. I, like everyone else, just wanted to talk about my August constituent meeting. It is Tuesday the 9th, 5:30 p.m. on Zoom, and that information is on the council website. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, and now we are ready for any council committee reports this evening. And seeing none, we now go to the public comment period. I see several people here in the room this evening, so if I could have a show of hands as how many people actually wish to take the podium and speak this evening. One, two, three, four. All right, and if we... Yeah, I counted Ms. Pearl. If we could maybe get a little bit of an indication, are there members of the public that are signing in via Zoom?
Do you have members of the public attending the meeting via Zoom? If any of those attendees would like to speak during public comment, please use the raise hand feature now to indicate your desire to speak. You can find the raise hand button under the reactions tab or the more tab in your control bar. And if you're not able to locate that and would like to speak, just send a chat to the meeting host to let us know, and we can recognize you that way.
And for those wishing to speak, go ahead and queue up now. We will ask you to sign in and state your name, and I believe if there are only going to be four members of the public in chambers, and we don't know how many yet from the public, why don't we say every speaker will get four minutes to speak? So...
My name is Bradley Rushton. Before I make my statement, I would like to offer up my appreciation to the City Council and the public at large for supporting the Bloomington Police Department. That is a tough job, and I want you to know from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate personally, and I know a lot of people that I represent appreciate it as well. So thank you. Councilmembers, my constituents, Bloomington public, I am currently the sitting president for ASME 2487. I am employed as a fleet maintenance master technician. I am here on behalf of my constituency and my coworkers in regards to the current ongoing contract negotiations with the city's administration. Due to agreements of confidentiality with the city's administration representatives, I cannot discuss any aspect of the current state of affairs between the union and the city reps. However, I am here to speak on contractual agreements that were negotiated in the past. The contract between ASME and the city dated 2009 to 2013 was a five-year contract. On that particular contract, the union members were able to secure a 15.5% increase over the life of that agreement. The contract years between 2014 and 2022, the union employees received a total of 14.75% over that nine-year period. While many, if not all, of the administrative heads have enjoyed regular increases that meet or exceed the cost of living expenses, the union members, as well as non-union members, have fallen steadily behind. If you would like to see the percentages of comparison, please go to opentarels.com. That's opentarels.com to view exactly how far behind we truly are. The disparity in compensation is apparent when one looks at how many employees the city has lost in recent months. While we appreciate the city has many financial responsibilities that must be, must be bet in regards to supplying the citizens with all the services that are required and expected by the citizens of Bloomington, it is also the responsibility of the administration to address employees' rate of fair compensation with the rate of inflation. The employees of this fine city work diligently to supply the services so vital to the citizens and the visitors of Bloomington. All of the departments under utilities and public works are the unseen force, excuse me, the unseen force behind all aspects of the city's functions. While we may not be visually recognized like the fire department or the police department, without these essential employees and their dedicated efforts, the city's services would be adversely affected and/or stopped completely. This is absolutely the case when it came to the COVID-19 pandemic. The essential employees were at their posts day in and day out, braving the virus, risking their own health as well as the health of their family and friends. To our sorrow, some of our colleagues and their families members did not survive. In closing, we, the members of ASME 2487, would like to respectfully request the support of the City Council and the citizens of Bloomington in our attempts to bring a fair and reasonable conclusion with our efforts with the current city administration. We, the members of ASME 2487, will continue to provide the many services that the city of Bloomington has come to enjoy and will need in the future. If you have any questions or would like to discuss any aspect of previous contracts, we would welcome the conversation. We are at your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and entertain all of the speakers here in chambers.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead and sign in and state your name, and you will have four minutes as Mr. Lucas, are there any people on Zoom?
I have a member on Zoom, no.
Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Stephen French, and I would like to thank the board for listening to us today. As a Bloomington city worker, I'm proud of the work I do. I know my job matters, and the people of Bloomington depend on my services I provide. In turn, I just want to earn a decent living to support myself and my family. With our wages being at the average of 22% below the national average, it's getting harder and harder to do this. While I didn't get in this work to be rich, I don't believe any of us did, I do believe that those of us in public service deserve a fair wages and good benefits. It doesn't matter whether the boss is a politician, a bureaucrat, or a CEO. Public services matter to everyone, and I'm asking you to invest in us. I've done a little research here from 2014 to 2020 on the amount of raises on the contracts that the city of Bloomington and ASME agreed upon. In 2014, the ASME got 0%, so they took no raise. 2015, they took a 1% raise. 2016, took a 1% raise. 17, 1.5. 18, 2.0. 19, 2.0. 20, 2.25. 21, 2.5. 20, 2.5. As we spoke before, it's roughly 14% below the average. On some of the highest-paid members of the city of Bloomington, they're the top, I believe it's 100 or over $75,000 a year. That's roughly 75% above the national average. So what I did is I took a five-year city Bloomington fleet mechanic. In 2019, this gentleman made $48,317.90. He was 31.8% lower than the average city employee. He was 26.7% lower than the national average. In 2020, he made $52,055.06. He was 26.5% lower than the average city employee pay, and he was 21.1% lower than the national average. I also went to the city of Lafayette, because obviously that's where some people are getting their numbers. In 2019, the same employee of five years of fleet made $55,770, and he was 21.3% lower than the average pay of that city. He was 15.4% lower than the national average. In 2020, he made $56,490. He was 20.3% lower than average city pay, 14.3% lower than national average. As the... Now, we're going to go to sanitation. As a 26-year sanitation worker, in 2020, this gentleman made $49,722. He was 29.8% lower than the average city pay. He was 24.6% lower than the national average. The same gentleman in Lafayette made $52,000... Well, same gentleman, the gentleman in Lafayette for fleet or for sanitation, made $52,068.30. He was 10.7% below the city pay, 21% lower than the national average. So, and speaking as we, as I go along this, we have 13 steps in our handbook, different pay grades. It's out of 13 steps, in 2022, the average starting pay out of 13 steps was $19.67. As a 30-year member, a 30-year city employee, in 2022, the average pay for all 13 steps was $23.73. $23.73 to raise a family of four, a daycare, and a house. So I'm asking for the board to please take into consideration how far beneath pay and average we are. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker? Be sure to sign in and state your name.
My name's Steve Robertson. Some of you probably recognize me. I've been in front of the board before on ASME issues in the past. I've been employed with the city going on 29 years. The blue-collar workers, as we are, we've always been a tight-knit family. Everybody knew everybody, everybody knows everybody's name. But in the past, we've had such turnovers that I don't know my coworkers half the time. And they hire new workers, and they don't stick around long enough for me to get to know them. And the question is, why is this happening? The reason this is happening, inflation has gained a larger percent each year than the percent of wages over the rest of the years. I feel like the city has become a training center. We hire people, we train them, we transform them into good and well-trained employees, then the next thing you know, they're gone. And that's because the city doesn't offer a competitive wage. It should be the other way around. The city needs to offer a competitive wage to attract highly qualified employees. All the city is doing is filling open positions with a body that is breathing, and with the wages as low as they are, that's even getting difficult to do, even having a hard time getting anybody to fill a position. The city of Bloomington and its employees have a responsibility to provide quality service with as little disruption as possible. The only way this can be accomplished is to pay a wage that retains the quality employees and attract the new quality employees. What you see here tonight is just a small portion of our workforce. These are the guys that are behind the scene. They are the backbone of the city. They keep the city running like a smith's watch. Why do we do it? I can tell you right now, it's not for the money. And it's not for the glory, because we are in the back, in the back scenes, we don't get no glory. We do it because we care. That's the type of people we got working here. They care about the service that they deliver to the public, and that's our most important thing to do. But I want to go on a little bit on the wages. An average city employee makes about $22.15 an hour, and that's $46,000 a year. That comes out about $3,833 per month. That don't sound bad, right? Okay? Then you got to pay 22% of taxes out of that. That's $843. Then we got to pay our medical insurance. That's another $400 a month. Then we get into the mortgage and the rent. Average mortgage and rent, about $1,200 in the city of Bloomington. Then he's got to apply the gas to get back and forth to work. Gas price is about $200. To feed his family, you're looking at about $800 a month to feed his family. Then you got the utility bills on top of that, and that could be anywhere from $200 to $300, $400.
Mr. Robertson, you are at your time. Can you wrap?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That leaves a total of $190 in his pocket, and that don't include car payment and all the other expenses that comes on top. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Lisa Martin. I am an area field service director with the International Union, ASME, and I am here standing with these workers tonight. First of all, I do want to do what Brad did, and thank you all for your service, because I know that you guys know what it's like to serve the public, and I know that you know how much public services matter. So I get that you get that. So I just want to tell you all how much I appreciate the work that you do. And I also want to just say, you know, as we're talking about, I can't say it any better than they did, as far as what they do and what it matters, but I do want to say, I did read a quote from Mayor Hamilton, and if I can read it here tonight, might have to put on my cheaters. Give me just a minute. It says, "We're proud of the work we do together and are committed to providing equitable compensation and conditions for these essential members of the city team." I don't think anybody could have said it any better. This was at the conclusion of the 2018 negotiating session when an agreement was reached between the city and the union. And I just hope that that is still the, coming off of two years of a pandemic, that how truly essential these workers are. And also, I just want to say that, sorry, I just think that the work that they do day in and day out is more noticed by what's not seen, is what we don't see, that we know that they keep Bloomington working, and that's why we've started this "Invest in Us" hashtag campaign, because I see all the good work that the city of Bloomington's doing. I see what you've done to get put on the map, and I do think that investing in Bloomington and investing in these workers would be the smart thing to do. So I just thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And now, if we have one more speaker in chambers, Mr. Do we have anyone from Zoom? Yeah, come on up, please.
Hi. That's actually a little hard to follow. I'm speaking on something else. But I'm a Bloomington resident, and just thank you for all the service that you do for all the rest of us, in addition to everybody else in the room. So, well, okay, I'll go with it. So my name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We're a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County in fostering conditions for prosperity. That's how we define economic development. And I'm here actually with an invitation today to anybody who lives or works in Monroe County, so all of you, anyone here, anyone else who's listening. Something that we've heard again and again is challenges related to those conditions for prosperity, housing, wages, quality of life issues like childcare and transit, you know, how we're using land for growing jobs and things like that. So the BEDC and our partners, we've launched a new initiative called the Economic Vitality Project, and everyone here is invited to participate in that. And if you take out your phones, I'll tell you how you can get involved with that. But it's essentially something where we're pulling people together across the community to do three things. One, look at what are some of the biggest challenges that we want to try to address together across sectors, across different parts of Monroe County? Number two, how do we better support the current initiatives that are underway to address those issues? And then number three, where do we need to fill in the gaps? What still needs to be done as a community? So the invitation I have today is, if you go to the website, bloomingtonedc.com, that's Bloomington, like Economic Development Corporation, bloomingtonedc.com backslash EVP, like Economic Vitality Project, there's an engagement survey on there, and you can fill that out. To get involved, you can sign up to get updates on the project if you just want to learn more about it. You can sign up to be a part of a focus group or a working group or something like that. We have these working groups and focus groups going over the next couple of months. At the end of the year, the goal is to have essentially a co-owned plan in the community across sectors, saying, okay, here are all the different things we're going to tackle together, and start implementing it in 2023. It builds on existing efforts. So we took, with our facilitators and others, 40-some economic development-related plans and studies that currently exist in the community, because we do not want to duplicate anything. It's not a study. It's not something where we're studying something, but we're really looking at where we can come together and try to implement some of these, some of these solutions for the community. So if you care about any of the issues I mentioned about, or if you have some input, we would love to have you at the table. And also, thank you to the city of Bloomington, because I know we have many partners at the table and support from the city as well as others across the community. And we look forward to working with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the Zoom? All right, well, that concludes our public comment period for this evening. We will now move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any this evening? And I'm not seeing that we do. So now we will move on to our legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 22-20 be introduced and read by the clerk by town, not just only...
Seconded. Moved and seconded, and will the clerk...
Call the roll.
You've got to call the roll, because we've got Zoom.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
And will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance 22-20. To amend Title 15 of the Bloomington
Yes, ordinance 2220. "To amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic regarding amending Section 1512030 to remove three signalized intersections and add three signalized intersections. Section 152001O by deleting the reference to restricted turn intersections. Section 152402O by changing speed limits at four locations. Section 153203O to change parking on Lincoln Street between Smith and Third to back-end angle parking, and to add pull-in parking on South Morton Street from West Patterson Drive and Grimes Lane to 190 north of West Patterson Drive and Grimes Lane. Section 153205O to allow for prohibiting parking in municipal parking lots to respond to weather and maintenance issues. 153208O to remove no parking spaces on South Morton Street and South Rogers Street, and to add no parking spaces on Lincoln Street and North Park Avenue. Section 1532100 to add two loading zones on East Fourth Street. Section 153702O to change the boundaries of the Garden Hill Residential Neighborhood Permit Parking Zone. Section 1504001O to add paid parking spaces and the Trades District Garage. And Section 154802O to admit, to add an administrative towing fee when vehicles are towed for reserved parking or outstanding citation violations. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Title 15, Vehicles and Traffic, of the Bloomington Municipal Code, and comes forth at the request of city staff, the Parking Commission, the Traffic Commission, and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission. The ordinance makes the following changes. Removes three signalized intersections and adds three signalized intersections. Deletes Bloomington Municipal Code 152001O, restricted turn intersections. Changes speed limits at four locations. Provides for back-end parking on the west side of Lincoln Street between Smith and Third, and provides for pull-in parking on the west side of South Morton Street from West Patterson Drive and Grimes Lane at 190 north of West Patterson Drive and Grimes Lane. Allows the city to prohibit parking in city parking lots in anticipation of snow emergencies or light lot maintenance and repair. Removes no parking spaces on Morton Street and South Rogers Streets, and adds no parking spaces on Lincoln Street and North Park Avenue. Adds two loading zones on East Fourth Street. Alter's the boundaries of the Garden Hill Residential Neighborhood Permit Parking Zone. Adds additional pay-by-phone parking on North Walnut Grove, East 13th Street, and South Rogers Street. And adds the Trades District Garage to the list of municipal parking garages and lots. Sorry, I switched that. And adds an administrative fee for towing vehicles of $25. And you do not have a committee recommendation. Thank you.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2220 be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we are ready now for the presentation. With us is Ms. Rosenbarger.
Thank you. I'm Beth Rosenbarger, the Assistant Director of Planning and Transportation. On the call, we also have Michelle Wall, the Parking Services Director, Rayanne Cox, Parking Enforcement Supervisor, and Neil Copper, Senior Project Engineer with Department of Engineering. Sorry, Rayanne and Michelle are with Public Works. So they're on the Zoom call, too. So as I think we can tell from the clerk's reading, this ordinance covers a lot of ground, literally and figuratively. So Title 15 is a section of code that regulates vehicles and traffic. So we have a lot of amendments that happen over time, or changes that happen over time. We work to collect those and then bring them as a package together. So that's why I'm here today. So I'm just going to go through each section that we have in there and briefly describe what it is. So with the signalized intersections that are listed in there, this first signalized intersection is Bloomfield Road and Basswood Drive. We are proposing to remove the signal from code. The signal will physically remain. It will belong to NDOT, so we don't need it in our city code, because we're not regulating the signal at that point. The second signal listed in there, I did these in an odd order, is located at the intersection currently of Leonard Springs and Tap Road. We would be physically removing this signal and removing it from code also. This signal was installed to be a temporary signal during I-69 construction. We can answer questions about that if you have any. This other signal is back in the first category. So at the intersection of West Third Street and Franklin Road, we would like to remove this from code. The signal will physically remain. It will no longer be our jurisdiction. It's an NDOT signal now. We are adding two signals. These two are on North Walnut Street, one with the intersection of 11th Street, and one with the intersection of 14th Street. Those would need to go into code and be physically put into the street. Another new signal to add to code is a signal at Tap Road and Deborah Drive. We would add this signal to code and physically add the signal, not to be confused with the others. NDOT is funding the signal, but it will be a city signal. We're having fun. So Section 2, this is a table that is currently in Chapter, in Title 15. It's called Restricted Turn Intersections. There is nothing listed in this table, and we would like to remove this from code. This is not to be confused with the next section that has restricted turns on red at signalized intersections, which does have a list of intersections and is a specific table. So this, we feel comfortable that anytime there are other restrictions at an intersection, they have to be signed, and that can be sufficient. Section 3 changes the speed limit along several sections of how our streets change names, Rogers/Madison Street and Henderson/Indiana Avenue. And this would change the speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. Section 4, this is a table in code that specifies where on-street parking is angled, and where that is allowed, and then it specifies the angle. So we would be changing this section of Lincoln Street that goes from Smith to Third is currently listed as pull-in angle. We would be switching that to back-end angle. And then there was some recently added pull-in angle parking on Morton Street at Grimes, and we want to codify that as well. Section 5, the exact verbiage is in there, but this allows the city to prohibit parking in city parking lots in anticipation of snow emergencies or other lot maintenance and repair. Section 6 removes some described areas from the no parking list. That means it's allowing parking, and adds several areas to the no parking list, which means we are prohibiting parking. This is one of the areas on North Park Avenue, between 13th, East 13th and East 14th Streets. The street is maybe 12 feet wide, and currently, there might be one no parking sign-up, but is codified that parking is allowed. So we would like to correct that. And there, I think, are a couple other listed. Section 7 converts two metered spaces to two loading zone spaces in this block of Fourth Street on the north side between Washington and Lincoln. Section 8 changes the boundaries of the Residential Neighborhood Permit Parking Zone 6 to align with the neighborhood boundary. So in this image, and there's a lot of images in the packet, the dashed blue line is what the current residential neighborhood permit parking zone is. The area highlighted in green is what we want to change that to in code. It does not change, there's a definition of eligibility for a parking permit. It doesn't change that. It changes the boundaries. So for example, currently on 15th Street, the boundary is from Walnut to Indiana Avenue. But if there is a home that fronts on Walnut and their address is on Walnut, they're not able to get a neighborhood parking permit. So we wanted the two boundaries to align. Section 9 adds pay-by-phone parking in described areas. Three of those areas were East 13th Street, from Fess Avenue to Woodlawn Avenue, South Rogers Street, near, just south of West Fourth Street, shown on the left, and North Walnut Grove Street, shown in that picture. This one doesn't have an image. Section 10 adds an administrative fee for towing vehicles. That's it? Welcome, any questions? I could ask, just with my presentation, if any other staff on the call would like to add to anything I presented.
And do we have an amendment that we need to entertain before we?
Yes, we.
Madam President, if I may? I'd like to move Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2220. Section 7 shall be amended by inserting the word "east" before Fourth Street in the row to be added to Schedule O. And I'm sure Ms. Rosenbarger can fill in the gaps on that after a second.
We've seconded, and do we need to call the roll on that before we go?
No, it's on the table.
Oh, it's on the table? Okay. Yes, any further description of this? It sounds like it's housekeeping.
Yes, we, Fourth Street has an east and a west, and we need to specify that it's the east part, that block of East Fourth. Thank you.
All right, very good. Any questions from council?
Just about the amendment?
Yes, about Amendment 1. And see no questions from council? Any, any members of the public wish to speak to the matter?
For any members of the public on Zoom that want to comment on Amendment 1, please use the raised hand feature to indicate your desire to speak. I've not seen any immediate interest on Zoom.
All right, we will assume that that will hold, and let's come back to council for any further discussion, or are we ready to call the question? All right, ready to call the roll on Amendment 1. Okay, Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes 700. And now we are ready to go on to the rest of the ordinance. Any questions from council? And I see Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I have a couple of questions regarding process. First of all, on the two signalized intersections on North Walnut Street. So construction is almost done, or already finished, on those signals at 11th Street and 14th Street. So I'm wondering why those changes didn't come to us before construction began, since technically, we are supposed to approve things.
Mr. Copper?
Thanks.
I think the short answer is that ideally it would. I believe the changes did make it to Traffic Commission, but I think a sooner Title 15 update would have been preferable.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Is my audio working?
It is. You're a little bit muted. I don't know if you can get closer to your microphone?
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I think the, the short answer is that ideally it would have come to you before it was constructed. I believe it went to Traffic Commission before construction, but there was not a Title 15 update that came before council, before construction.
I see. I have a related question, if I may?
Yes, please.
So in another case, let's see, it is the back-end angled parking on South Lincoln Street, next to the Waldron Hill Busker Park. The 180-day order was issued on December 15, 2021, so clearly, it's been more than 180 days. So in this case as well, why was ordinance not brought to us sooner?
I don't totally know the answer, other than it takes, we usually start compiling amendments, and from the time we say we're ready to bring them, it ends up being two months, I'll say, on average, before we get to present them. A challenge is that we also have three transportation commissions, Parking Commission, Traffic Commission, and Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission. A lot of these items get presented to at least one, and often two, commissions. But I would, I don't know. I, I think just the timeliness of getting it all together. I would have loved to have presented it in May.
Yeah, and I mean, in this case, with the, the parking on Lincoln, the Traffic Commission approved it November 17, 2021. So I, yeah, I just, anyway, I'll, I'll save my comments for the comment period. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes, thank you. I had a meeting this past week with our liaison to the IU student government, and they specifically expressed concern about speeds on Henderson. So I'm glad to see that speed, that posted speed limit drop a little bit. What I'm wondering is how you arrived at 25 as opposed to 20, say, or 15 or something?
And who is that question?
This is Neil Copper in the Engineering Department. So state code only allows speed limits to be set at 20 miles per hour or higher. It wouldn't allow 15. So in this case, the options would have been 20 or 25. 25 is consistent with all of the surrounding streets. And so that was, that was largely a reason, and there are other guidelines that we looked at as well that would have recommended 25 in the context.
That's helpful, thank you. May I follow up quickly? And just for my own understanding of process, what, are there, is there a mechanism, or an event, or an occasion, to get feedback from neighbors in that area?
To get feedback about the change in the speed limit?
Mm-hmm, correct.
I think the mechanism would have been the discussion that happened via the Traffic Commission. This was actually a request from the Traffic Commission to evaluate that street.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty, did you have a question?
Yeah, just briefly. Do we, how many Title 15 ordinances do we typically hear in a year? Is it, is it one or two? We sort of collect, you know, Title 15 updates and tend to hear them in this sort of omnibus legislation? Is there a normal cadence to that, or a regular pattern?
We've been aiming to do three, so that 180-day orders would not expire. And with that rhythm, you know, the way 180-day works, that would prevent it. We have mainly been able to achieve two a year so far. Because I could add, we have been short-staffed, which a lot of people can speak to, and that has added to the workload challenges with getting it here faster.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, you have a question?
I just wonder what is, what would the impact be on the, changing the boundaries of the Garden Hill? Is, is there any impact there for, you know, the residents?
The impacts are very limited. It would be for if somebody lives in a home that is, has a Walnut Street address, is now eligible to get a permit, or a 17th Street address. Those were the main two areas where if your home fronted on those streets, or had an address on that street, you were not considered part of the zone and eligible. There is a lot of available on-street parking in that zone, so I think the impacts would mostly be to somebody who was previously not considered eligible that is now. And I don't think anyone who was previously eligible will notice any difference. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, can you tell me a little bit, or tell us a little bit more about the $25
Yeah, can you tell me a little bit, or tell us a little bit more about the $25 non-escalation tow citation fee? Maybe Ms. Wall is the one to address that. Section 10?
Hi there. I'm here, I'm here. Yes, I'll be glad to address it. This is the fee that we presented, I believe it was back in April or May, and we removed the Bloomington Police Department, had a tow fee of 25, and I believe it was specifically you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, to say, make sure that we capture the 25. And I said I would bring that back to council to make sure we captured the 25 in a tow citation. So that's what that's referencing.
Okay, I, refresh my memory, please. What does this $25 help pay for? Is it the administration of the citations or...
Correct. Right. It was the administration fee of doing the whole entire tow, the processing of the tow, and it will now become a citation. So to get a tow release, you had to go to the Bloomington Police Department. They were open 24/7. Our current department isn't open 24/7. So to recapture the administrative fee in managing this service, we applied it as a citation fee.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further questions from council during this round, we'll go to the public if there are any comments, either here in chambers or from our Zoom audience.
And I'll just repeat for the folks that might be joining via Zoom, if you would like to use the raise-hand feature to indicate a desire to speak, you can find that under the Reactions tab or the More tab in your control bar. Or you can send a chat to the meeting host, and we can recognize you that way.
Seeing no hands?
No hands at the moment, no.
All right, we are back to council for either final questions or comments. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, question or comment?
I have two more questions.
Go right ahead.
The back-in angle parking on South Lincoln, there's this handy visual to show people how to do it. Is that going to be posted there? It was in our packet.
I don't believe it.
It will be on signs. We can, I'll have to ask about that. Rayanne, Ms. Cox might be able to share. They did put them on people's cars for quite some time on Lincoln to help people know, especially if they were parked incorrectly. So we had them printed, and they, we gave, provided them to the Boys and Girls Club to hand out there, and they did just put them instead of a ticket.
Okay, well, that's good because it's relatively new still.
Yeah.
All right, may I ask my other question?
Yes, please.
Okay. My other question is a little more broad. Let me just find the, so Section 9, adding pay-by-phone parking spaces on North Walnut Grove and on 13th Street. It seems like we're expanding the parking meters, or not parking meters, we're expanding the on-street parking that you have to pay for quite a bit outside of the downtown area. And is that a, was that kind of a policy decision? Or, I mean, initially, you know, several years ago when the parking meters went in, and now we have other technology for that, it was really focused on downtown. Could you speak to that at all?
Sure, I can speak to the policy side, and then if Ms. Wall or Ms. Cox wanted to add any more, that'd be great. So it's demand-based, I would say. So in these areas where, so two of the areas that are listed in the packet, the East 13th Street and Walnut Grove are adjacent to IU campus, and they also have an interest in us having regulations on that parking. And usually, if there isn't a payment attached to it, people park a lot longer. There's just a lot of demand to park there. The East 13th Street is adjacent to the IU Arts Annex, and North Walnut Grove is kind of to the side of the business, school of business. The other location is on South Rogers, and it is directly adjacent to the meters. And we debated if we would have meters installed there or do pay-by-phone for right now. And I think we landed on, we did land on doing pay-by-phone for the time being in place of having new meters installed at that location. So that one is perhaps more unique in that it is adjacent to the meter zone.
The Walnut Grove is near McNutt, right? Is it also near the, is there also a park?
Sorry, thank you. You're correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so it was really in response to demand and...
Yes, there's a new dorm.
Trying to get people to stop just storing their cars there.
Yes, there's a new dorm right there. It's not just McNutt. There's more housing in that space now. So, yeah.
All right.
Sorry, I got that one wrong. I mixed up, I think, it's farther south, how there are like multiple groves right there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Any last round questions from council before we move to final comment? All right, anyone wish to make a final comment? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Sorry, this, I didn't mean for this to be the Piedmont Smith Show, but I would just ask that Title 15 changes come to us more frequently. Of course, I totally understand staff shortages. I think all of us understand staff shortages, and they've slowed down our longer-term projects a lot. But I just, it just rubs me the wrong way when we've already installed an intersection and then it comes to city council. I mean, it's unusual for Title 15 ordinances to get much pushback at this level, but you never know. I mean, we, sometimes people are just not aware of changes coming forward, and so they only, you know, the people who live there only find out when it's at the city council, and so there could be some last-minute considerations. So having it already built and then coming here is not really the best way of doing things. So that would be my one request for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a final comment? And I would just iterate that point as well, that having these come more frequently, I think, would definitely be helpful. And with respect to the staff shortages, that's another something of concern in being able to get things to us in a timely manner. One of the reasons why I like having these discussions in the committee, the whole, is that gives the public yet another week to be able to hear these kinds of things that are coming, that are coming to us for approval. So they'll have at least a week before we finalize a vote to be able to express any concerns that they may have about any kind of traffic issue that's near their residence that they may want to weigh in on. So anyone else for a final comment before we call the question? All right, will the clerk please call the roll on Ordinance 22-20, as amended?
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Scambalory?
Yes.
Thank you, and that passes 7-0-0. We are now on to legislation for first readings.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 22-21 be introduced in the review by Title Synopsis summary.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would like to refer Ordinance 22-23 to the Committee, the whole. That will take place next week on August 10. Pardon me? Oh, you, do you need to read? Yes, please. The clerk will please read.
If you want me to. Let's see here. "Ordinance 22-21 to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to Establish a Historic District Regarding Bethel AME Church and Parsonage, Bethel AME Owner and Petitioner." And the synopsis is, "This ordinance amends Chapter 8.20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled 'The List of Designated Historic Districts in Order to Designate the Bethel AME Church and Parsonage as a Historic District.' The owner and petitioner, Bethel AME, sought this action, and the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission, after a public hearing on July 14, 2022, recommended that the structure be designated historic with a rating as 'outstanding.' This rating was based upon certain historic and architectural criteria set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 8.08101E entitled 'Historic District Criteria. Local designation will provide the protection needed to ensure that this property is preserved.'"
Thank you. And again, we will refer that to the Committee, the whole, next week. And at this time, we have additional public comment period. If anybody here in chambers wishes to speak to something that's not been talked about in today's meeting, or anyone from Zoom.
Zoom, if you would like to speak now, on items not on tonight's agenda, you can use the raise-hand feature to indicate you would like to speak. Not that I see, no.
All right, let's go ahead and take this opportunity to talk briefly about our council schedule coming up.
Yes, just a quick note. At this time, I am not aware of any legislation that will be ready for the next council legislative cycle, starting on August 17. The council has a scheduled work session this Friday to preview any items coming forward at that legislative cycle. So given that there's no new business, at this time, the council may wish to make a motion tonight to cancel this Friday's work session.
I will make that motion.
And I will second.
All right, moved and seconded. And will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to cancel our work session on Friday?
Okay, and we'll be starting with Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that concludes our business for this evening, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, we're adjourned. Thank you.